Good evening. Laramo County and the League of Women Voters welcome you to this forum for the City of Fort Collins Mayor and Council Representatives from Districts Two, Four, and Six. I am Peggy LaPointe from the League of Women Voters, and I'll serve as moderator. This forum is being livestreamed on this city of Fort Collins site at FCGOV.com/FCTV. It is broadcast on FCTV Channel 14, and on Connection, and on Comcast Channel 14881. A recorded copy will be posted to the city website, and as of Monday, it will also be posted to the website of the League of Women Voters of Laramo County, and to our Voter Service website, which is called Vote411. Vote411 also has information about the candidates and their answers to questions that have been asked by the League. I ask our audience members not to record the forum on your cellphone, because the FCC requires that the program be recorded in its entirety. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization with the goal of helping citizens to be well-informed voters. We do not endorse any party or candidate. We do take positions on issues after careful study and after arriving at a consensus among our members. This is a forum, not a debate. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to introduce themselves. I will then pose questions to the candidates, and each will have one minute to respond. Each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. We will conclude about nine o'clock. I request that audience members refrain from expressing support or opposition to candidate statements during the forum, so that we can proceed smoothly. If you've used a note card for a written question, please hold them up, or pass them to the end of the aisles, so that League volunteers can pick them up. We will screen questions to avoid duplication, and we will attempt to represent all issues of interest. The candidates will be in the lobby after the forum if you have questions we did not have time to cover. Please be aware that there will be two Colorado ballot issues and five Fort Collins ballot issues. The League will host a Zoom program on October 9th to analyze those issues. You can access that program by going to the website of the League of Women Voters of Laramo County, click on the calendar, and register for the event. Now let me introduce the candidates. The candidates for Mayor are Jenny Arnt and Patricia Babbitt. For District Two Councilperson, Eric Hamrick, Sean McCoy, and Julie Pignarto. For District Four Councilperson, Shirley Peel and Melanie Potnati. For District Six Councilperson, Alexander Adams and Emily Francis. Let me begin with allowing the candidates 90 seconds to make an introductory statement, and we will begin with Dr. Arnt.
Oh, thank you very much. First, I honestly want to thank the League of Women Voters for all you do in terms of being a very nonpartisan, equal participation, and these forums are really important for promoting our democracy. So I guess by way of my short bio, I am Jenny James Arnt. I was not born here, I was born in Boulder, and three weeks later, my parents moved me to Fort Collins, where I went to more Blevins Pooter. I spent considerable time overseas in the Peace Corps and other things. I went on to earn a couple of master's degrees, one in geography from Boulder, one in special education at Purdue University, and a PhD in literacy and language. I devoted my professional life to special education, and it's always been important to me to serve and be attentive to the most vulnerable populations in our country and our world. After that, I moved back to my, we lived in Mozambique for six years, and I moved back to my hometown, Fort Collins. And at that point, I ran for State Representative, where I served as the Chair of Agriculture and the Chair of Water for Colorado. And after that, I was, I ran for Mayor, and I became Mayor in 2021, where I continue to serve my community and live out my values through my ordinances.
Thank you. Ms. Babbitt.
Thank you, and I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for offering this forum and keeping people informed. My mother was a very active League of Women voter back in the 70s, and so I learned to appreciate you guys early on, so thank you. So, why am I running for Mayor? I decided to run for Mayor kind of last minute, because I feel like my voice and others' voices, including people in marginalized communities and our wildlife, I felt like we just weren't being heard correctly. And so I wanted a chance for more conversations, because I've always been a person like Jenny who's tried to stand up for vulnerable communities, and like Jenny, I have also taught ESL, but that's been basically my whole life. And I've worked to, just to help a lot of people who have suffered from injustices by people with too much power, so I'm always looking out for them. I hope to bring new, fresh ideas to our city government, and work together to keep everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I had to stop.
Yes, you do. Mr. Hamrick.
Yes, hi, I am Eric Hamrick. My wife and I have lived in Fort Collins for over 25 years. We've lived in three different neighborhoods in Fort Collins, and would you guess, all of them are in District Two. My work-life experience includes serving in the United States Air Force at Edwards Air Force Base, where I supported experimental aircraft programs that included the NASA Space Shuttle. Also, I've worked at HP, the Colorado Department of Education, and CSU. I was also a substitute teacher for a while. I previously served on the Fort Collins City Council from 2001 to 2005. As a council member, I served on numerous committees, and was the city council's elected representative on the Laramo County Open Lands Advisory Board. I worked on the Open Space Citizens Initiative, and I currently serve as a volunteer ranger assistant for the Laramo County Open Lands and City of Fort Collins Natural Areas. I think the first rule of good government is to listen to what your constituents have to say, and that's why I've been walking door-to-door on District Two almost every day. And I've been trying to meet as many voters as I can to hear what really bothers them the most. I'm running for city council because our current city council too often ignores input from those they represent, instead believing that they and a small group of special interests know best. We need a change in city leadership to ensure that residents' concerns matter.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Thank you.
Hey, my name's-
It's me, Mr. Hamrick, and I am sorry, Mr. McCoy will be next.
Hi, I'm Mr. McCoy. I grew up in outright outside the DC area, went to school at Virginia Tech, I actually have a psychology degree of all things, graduated from Virginia Tech in 2007, and moved out here with my wonderful wife about nine years ago. I was a renter in Fort Collins, I think over in District Four before we purchased our house about seven years ago in District Two, and we've really, really fallen in love with the city, we've really rooted here. We both enjoy how bikeable the city is, the variety of things you can do, and certainly the people that we've met in our time here. I'm a software developer, so I'm kind of like a data nerd, kind of a very analytical mind, which comes directly from my psychology degree. So I like to, I like to think that I take a data-driven approach to problem solving, but with kind of an empathetic mind. So I'm running for city council kind of as the, well, definitely as the inexperienced member, I'm the only one up here for District Two that hasn't already served in city council, but hope to bring kind of a new, a new mind and kind of a younger generation's experiences to Fort Collins City Council.
Thank you. Ms. Pinataro, did I get it right?
You did, good job, thank you. I too, first of all, I want to thank the League. I think this forum is so important to get all the candidates together, so that we can, you can compare everyone side by side, and I too, I've been a member of the League for six or seven years, I believe, and I'm so passionate about the way that they use data and have informed decisions, and so I appreciate that all so much. I moved here in the early 90s to go to CSU, and I was one of those that decided to stay. And throughout it all, almost 30 years, there was a brief time I left, and I came back as quickly as I could. It's been so great to experience the city and the numerous places I've lived throughout, I will not go through all 17, because I don't have enough time. And it's been awesome to see the city from the eyes of someone who worked in a restaurant, and then worked in retail, worked in production, and then finally, also, I'm in software and management, and now I work from home, and I'm very lucky to be able to do that. So I met my husband here, and we have a wonderful little 10-year-old boy, and I'm so happy that I have the privilege to be able to bring him up in this city.
Thank you. Mrs. Peel.
Hi, everybody, good evening. Thanks for coming out to visit with us. A little bit about myself, I'm Shirley Peel, and I am a wife, a mother, a former educator, and a 22-year resident of Fort Collins. I currently have the honor and pleasure to serve as the representative for District Four on our city council. I tell people I love this job, and I enjoy serving with my fellow council members, I enjoy being a bridge builder, a collaborator, a problem solver, and a vocal voice for the needs of District Four. Some of my colleagues and some community members have called me one of the hardest-working council members, and I do work hard, because I truly love this job. I work hard at being prepared for city council meetings and council sessions, I really like to dig deep into the issues, I ask lots of questions, lots of questions, and I enjoy holding monthly listening sessions for the community, and I go out and see y'all at community events, and I'm always available for a coffee chat. So in summary, I love this job, and it would be my honor to continue serving for District Four.
Thank you. Ms. Potyandi, did I get it right?
You did, nice work. And many people do not, so thank you. Good evening, my name is Melanie Potyandi, and I'm grateful for this opportunity as both a candidate and a League member myself. I also am running for the city council seat in District Four. I'm also here as a mom of two school-aged children, a school psychologist at Rocky Mountain High School, and a dedicated public servant in this community. I've spent most of my adult life working in service to others, and I think, you know, despite the fact that I have been involved in kind of various political things in this community for a long time, the things that make me most qualified for this position are the three that I mentioned. I think as a mom, I am able to understand what it's like to live within a family, and understand those issues here in the community, and to really be able to listen, and I also get to see the future of our city through my little boy's eyes, and the kind of community that they want to inherit, and I want to make sure that I'm being responsible with those decisions. As a school psychologist, I, it is, it makes me acutely aware that systems and policies that are made here behind this dais impact the everyday lives of folks in our community, and I want to make sure that I am making good decisions and that I'm here at the table. So I'm not going to be able to highlight everything about me as a person and a candidate tonight, but I'm excited about a robust conversation, and folks can learn about me at my website if they want to learn more.
Thank you. Mr. Adams.
Hello, my name is Alexander Adams, and I am running for city council in District Six. So a little bit about me, so I grew up in Albuquerque, New Mexico. Albuquerque, New Mexico unfortunately has wide income disparities, a lack of opportunity, and high levels of crime. That's actually what got me interested in politics in the first place, and that led me to go to CSU and get a degree in economics, and a master's degree in public policy and administration. I now do public policy analysis at multiple academic institutions, specifically focusing on things like criminology, as well as upward mobility and opportunity. Given that and my other experiences, so for example, I am currently 25, I'll be 26 on Election Day, and I'm also a renter myself and an aspiring homeowner, I believe I would bring a unique lived experience, as well as a unique perspective to city council in order to affect positive change in our community. Throughout tonight, on any of the questions that are asked, if you have any questions about my answers, chances are on my website, addamsforfc.com, that is addamsfor, like the number four, fc.com. I've written multiple comprehensive policy statements, so you can see exactly where I come from, and I believe that that would, you know, shed light on a lot of the topics we are discussing today. I'm looking forward, I look forward to answering your questions, and thank you for hosting this event.
Thank you. Ms. Francis.
Great, good evening, everyone. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the forum tonight, it's a good part of our democracy. I also want to thank everyone in the audience tonight, and everyone watching at home. Municipal elections are very important, because the decisions made by city council have the most impact on your day-to-day lives, and so it's really important to be educated and informed. So my name's Emily Francis, I'm the current District Six Representative, I've been the District Six Representative for the past four years, and the Mayor pro temp for the past two years. I was born and raised in Fort Collins, I feel like you always had the lister schools, so Laura Lusher in Collins, and I grew up in what is now the city's natural resource building, and actually, my first job was selling cookies and lemonade on the bike trail at age eight. It's not a great business model. However, I have a deep passion for Fort Collins, and I'm still here. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Natural Resources from Colorado State University, and a Master's in Public Health as well, which has come in very handy during the pandemic. So I have dedicated my career to helping working families and supporting our under-resourced community members, and that is really why I ran for city council and am running for reelection today, because supporting our working families and our under-resourced community members is my top priority and what is most important to me, and so I bring those values through to my decisions here on city council. So thank you, everyone, and I look forward to tonight.
Thank you. Now we'll begin with some questions. I'll pose the same question to each of you, and we'll just go down the line. Why don't we start with Ms. Babbitt on this first question? What do you see as the biggest challenges facing Fort Collins, and how would you address them?
So I think our growth is one of our biggest problems, and I think we need to be very careful to approach it from an environmental perspective, because I think a lot of people just don't realize how closely connected we are to our nature, and how fragile it is. So environmental, and in the same token, it's our housing and our transportation need to be considered from an environmental perspective.
Thank you. Mr. Hamrick.
Yeah, so there are a number of issues really that are pressing Fort Collins at this time. Number one issue is the issue mentioned by Patricia, is the rapid development and growth in Fort Collins. I know that when I've been out walking, talking with residents, they've expressed their concerns about the impacts on their neighborhood, and also the impacts on the cost of living in Fort Collins, and also the unintended consequences of rapid growth and development on the cost of the infrastructure, and just overall traffic congestion, air pollution, taxes, utility rates. So that's, that's a very pressing issue. The other issue is, of course, water, because you can, we're in the West, so you can never get away from water, and it's how we address those water needs and storage needs in the future that's going to be very critical. And the other issue is budget constraints.
Thank you, Mr. Hamrick. Mr. McCoy.
So similar, similar answers, different approaches. Number one, housing, number two, water, number three, energy. On housing, I do think that the rapid development is not necessarily the answer, but increasing supply, increasing density is how we start to address, it's one way we address the affordable housing crisis in Fort Collins. The more places there are for the population to live, supply and demand is not terribly complex way to understand how that will help. I think that also plays a large issue, or a large role in how we solve our water, or at least debate our water issue. If we can get more people into existing water taps, if we can work on making homes more efficient per capita, that's going to help us with our capacity issues. Otherwise, as we see with the water tap prices, there's really no way to solve that other than a drastic amount of spending. And lastly, energy, I've been really happy with the city's like 20, 30 climate goals, and would like to see continued actions to help us achieve those in a couple of years.
Thank you. Ms. Pinataro.
Thank you very much. Instead of reiterating what people have said, because yes, these are huge challenges that we have with our growth, our housing, and water, I will add another one to the list, and that is a lack of media. We are really suffering in northern Colorado for a lack of way to get reliable information. Our one newspaper is owned by a conglomerate, I used to work there, and so I know a little bit about it, and about Gannett's philosophies, and I really would like to see what role the city can play in helping to educate our population. The city does have some work to do, as we know, the website is a mess, being that's kind of where I come from, that's a passion of mine, so I hope we get that fixed sooner rather than later in the next year. And I really want to see what we can do to foster some kind of, we used to have quite a few dailies and weeklies around here, and we only have one anymore, so thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Peel.
Sorry, can you repeat the questions, just so I make sure?
Yes. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing Fort Collins, and how would you address them?
Okay, thank you. So according to our recently released community survey, and just being out knocking on doors, what I've heard from people are the cost of living, especially affordable housing, our transportation, our traffic safety, and our infrastructure, and then the economy and government spending. I would add water to that in addressing the needs of our homeless population, while balancing that with the needs of our community members. And so since I don't have a whole lot of time, I would just say that the land use code was a great place to start for addressing housing affordability. We have several plans in place to address our transportation, but that's going to take money, so we really need to be looking at that, how to fund those, and then just, I have so many ideas, and I've been working closely with city staff on the homelessness issues, especially the safe parking initiatives.
Thank you. Ms. Potyandi.
It's hard to be going late in the game when you're answering these questions. I spoke about my desire to see more affordable housing and smarter development in our city last night at the city council meeting, so I'm not going to expand on that more, but clearly, housing costs are a huge issue here, as are water, water rights, and being able to make sure we have sufficient clean water moving forward. But what I'd like to speak about is sustainability. I can tell you that working with high schoolers, they are feeling a high degree of stress about the future of their world, the climate that they're going to be inheriting, the water situation they're going to be inheriting from us, the solid waste situation that they're going to be inheriting from us in this room, and I think that Fort Collins is taking some really great steps, and I would like to see us be more assertive with things like municipal composting, more solar infrastructure, more emission, low emissions transportation options in our city, I think it's really critical.
Thank you. Mr. Adams.
The number one issue that Fort Collins faces is definitely the rapid population growth. Fort Collins is growing too much and too fast. All the other issues that we talk about today are going to be somewhat downstream from our population growth, which leads to stresses on water, which leads to stresses on traffic, and also impacts general neighborhood livability. I think that affordable housing is another really important issue. We need to have targeted solutions that get help to the people that need it most, and we need to mandate that developers actually build affordable housing, because there's a market failure in affordable housing, where developers have no incentive to build affordable housing, and instead they build luxury housing instead. So we need to mandate that, because building more doesn't necessarily always trickle down. And finally, we need to protect our environment, especially our open spaces, we need to make sure the legislative intent of the Hughes Open Space Initiative is carried through, we need to protect the Pooter, and we also need continuous air monitoring, so that we have more data with which we can try to improve our air quality.
Thank you. Ms. Francis.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I would say first is the widening gap in Fort Collins of who can and can't live here, which I think encompasses housing affordability and our transportation access, and we see more and more families and young working individuals having to leave Fort Collins, and we're not, we are no longer a place for everyone. The second, I would say, is climate, which has encompassed what a lot of others have said with water decreasing our carbon emissions and protecting our natural areas in Pooter River. And I think third is public information and communication. I think that after COVID, people are communicating and participating and getting their information in different ways, and how can the government be more responsive to that to make sure that we're getting adequate input? And I think over the past four years while I've been on city council, I've really followed through with that. I've adopted every major plan from our Climate Future, the Housing Strategic Plan, the Transit Master Plan, and our Active Moats Plans to lay the foundation to get us to where we need to go.
Thank you. Dr. Arnt.
Thanks for that question. So all of the above, and I think what underlies this is the fundamental question of trust. So I know we have great technical technicians, engineers, transit experts, we have climate experts, we have all this expertise, but if we don't have trust in the public, then we don't have anything. And so I want to focus on that, and that comes back to our election integrity, our voting systems, which we have rate choice voting coming up, which I'm very excited about, and we have to act in those ways that underpin all these other actions that we want to take, that all the other candidates have mentioned, right? Transit, climate change, growth. We can't tackle those unless we have a fundamental baseline, trust in each other and institutions.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Mr. Hamrick. What do you see as the biggest opportunities for Fort Collins in the next 10 years, and how would you take advantage of those opportunities?
There's a couple of opportunities I think could probably take advantage of, is one, Fort Collins is blessed to be in a, in a great location in Colorado, and so we have our natural areas, open space, parks and rec, and I think the citizens have spoken loudly about what we need to do and maintain within the city, and I think putting funding toward those interests that the community is very interested in, like parks and recs, and so we need to expand those and make sure we have the operational maintenance costs for those issues. The other issue is, I think it's really important, is to make sure that our energy is from a renewable energy, and specifically, I'm talking about rawhide plant that produces a lot of CO in the air, and they need to do a much better job of cleaning our air, which is some of the dirtiest in the country. I think Fort Collins ranks 15th out of, in the country as far as dirtiest air, as far as pollutants.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy.
I think, I think a lot of people kind of look up to Colorado in a number of different ways, it's a very popular place to move to, and I'd like to kind of use that opportunity of being like a leader to, to continue our efforts on the climate stage. I think there's a lot of interesting things that like the Platte River Power Authority is doing when it comes to modernizing our grid, doing things to stop burning carbon in order to get us our energy. The city already has a lot of pretty incredible incentives for efficiency improvements in the home, we used to do things like electric vehicle group buys. I think there's a lot of cool stuff we can do with modernizing the grid in order to handle the difference in time when people like to use energy and when we can generate it from renewable sources. I think it's one of the biggest challenges facing us and other cities in the US. So I think being- So, I think being our biggest opportunity is to kind of be a leader and show how that can be done for other places in the country.
Thank you. Ms. Pinataro?
Thank you. So, interestingly, I think the flip side of growth is it's also a great opportunity for this city. There'll be an announcement later tonight from PSD about some schools merging together, and this is because of declining enrollment. And so, with the growth that we aren't making happening, it happens, just like change, is we have to be very smart about how we can continue to have all people able to live here. Families with children, the teachers that teach our families, the nurses that take care of us when we're sick. And we haven't been doing a very good job of that in the last few decades, and we're finally making steps to make sure that everyone is welcome here.
Thank you. Mrs. Peel?
I love this question, because I have a whole list of opportunities that I would like to share. I'm not going to have time to share all of them, but one thing that I'm working on is the South College, where it was annexed along South College, and just trying to create an identity on that side of town, just like they did north, mid, old town, midtown. So, I'm really excited about that. I'm very passionate about making sure our parks and rec are funded, because that affects everyone. Just to elaborate on what Mr. McCoy said, I was really excited to read in the paper about PRPA's new, I don't know what you call it, the new plant that there, that can be, that's taken advantage of new technology that it can transfer, just being aware of new technology like that, being able to use it. The biggest thing is being a regional collaborator. I think Fort Collins is poised to be a regional collaborator in the areas of water, transportation, our business health, and just a regional economy. Told you I had a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Adams? Oh, excuse me. Ms. Pat Yandi, I apologize.
It is okay. I'm excited about the conversations that are happening at the city level right now about zoning, because I'm excited about the opportunities to see different kinds of housing coming into our neighborhoods and our city, especially when that's going to invite different kinds of neighbors into our neighborhoods. I think opening those doors is really going to enrich our neighborhoods and our community. I also, and I think Councilwoman Peel spoke to this a little bit, but District Four really is ripe for some opportunities to develop our business community and build more of an identity. We are lacking in that area, and I know there are some places where we could put in some really great mixed-use developments that have some businesses that could really bring neighbors together. And then, finally, I see this as a really critical point for us to be making some big strides environmentally. Again, I moved from Longmont a few years ago. They have municipal composting. That is a big issue for me that I would love to see come to the city.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Adams?
So, I think the environment is definitely one of the areas where we could definitely have one of the biggest positive impacts going forward. Specifically, I think that Fort Collins should study and implement what is known as a distributed energy system, because historically, you know, the reason that Fort Collins was so attractive for many people to live was its low energy rates. And as we move towards renewables, one of the problems is that these sources are intermittent. But switching to a distributed energy system would prevent our energy prices from going up as we move towards renewable, making it more affordable for everyone to live here. And it would actually allow us to kind of spearhead the movement towards these systems, which would again, allow us to have cheaper energy while at the same time improving our environment. So, it is good policy, it is good economics, and it's good for the environment. I also think that affordable housing is a place where we could have a ton of positive impact. We need targeted solutions to the people who need it most, and those, I think, are the two areas where we could have the most positive impact going forward.
Thank you. Ms. Francis?
Yeah, thank you for the question. You know, I think what's exciting about thinking about the next 10 years is that we have the opportunity to thoughtfully prepare for the future. And as the mayor Jenny always says, we are moving from a large town to a small city. And the exciting thing is, we get to decide what we want to be, and we want, what we want to prioritize, and what we want to value, and how we express those values. And I think the previous question really highlighted that we do have a lot of shared values over housing, water, climate, transportation, and we get to decide what we want to accelerate and how we want Fort Collins to look. And for me, that's really, I want Fort Collins to be a welcoming place for everyone. I want there to be opportunity for folks to go to school here, raise kids here, age and place here, and I want everyone to have a good quality of life and an access to that. So, the exciting thing is, is we get to lay the foundation for that and be really thoughtful about how we want Fort Collins to look.
Thank you. Dr. Arn?
Thank you so much. Thanks for all those comments again. It's funny being on this side or like the other, but I just think we should leverage our vibrancy, right? So, just, let's just, let's, let's not be down. Harness the people and the energy that we have in Fort Collins. Let's honor the past and our foreparents who created this town that we so treasure and love, and pay it forward, right? So, let's think about how we do that. How did they create this for us? How did they, they, they set the stage that we have the opportunity to be creative? We have so many good people in our town that are willing to take it forward, that we need to just come together and do that, and we do that for enhanced public outreach. Honor, sorry, sorry, sorry. Thinking about the future, paying it forward, paying our debts, like, I don't want to pass on anything to our children that we haven't taken care of, that we can't hand on, and then I just am so optimistic of our future.
Thank you. Ms. Babett?
I agree that we have a lot of opportunities here. One that I'm very focused on is our opportunity to show that we can improve our public transit before we have our density. I keep kind of harping on this, but I just believe there are so many creative ways that we can start getting people in the habit of using public transportation options. And I don't want to wait for all of our buildings to come. I feel like a lot of us need it now, and I just would love to be a model city to show we don't have to have density to get good transportation going. So, and I'd love to have it take us to our beautiful open spaces and the beautiful Pooter River, which I'm lucky enough to be close to, but a lot of the other spaces, I would like public transit to help me get there. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll begin with Mr. McCoy. Do you believe city council members should publicly state their positions on local ballot issues or endorse other candidates? Why or why not?
I would, I would say, yeah, absolutely. I'm big on transparency, honesty, integrity. I like, I like knowing what my elected officials are thinking and being able to predict how they're going to vote. I think it's why you should vote for somebody to represent you. I actually was doing an interview today with a Coloradoan, and they were asking about how I would vote on various state initiatives. And a lot of times, I would say like, well, personally, I feel like this, but I do or I don't think this one's going to be successful. And I don't think there'd be anything wrong with, with knowing where your elected officials stand on, even on issues that they may not be able to influence, because sooner or later, it's likely that that, that similar issue will come up in the, in the context of city government, and it'll be good to know where they stand.
Thank you. Ms. Pinataro?
Can you ask the entire question one more time?
You bet. Do you believe that city council members should publicly state their positions on local ballot issues or endorse other candidates? Why or why not?
Okay, thank you for the question. I wanted to hear it again to make sure I got every single part of that, because I think that yes, we are still, even when you're a council member, you're still a person, you will vote a way you will vote. Everyone has their level of risk tolerance they'd like to take, maybe, you know, if a council member endorsed another council member who then maybe didn't win, you are possibly sacrificing a future relationship. That should be up to the individual. I think it gets very interesting too, though, because it's so different from making a choice when you're on council, because you get these packets, you read, you do all this background research, and then the last piece of it is, well, this, coming up, the last piece is you get emails, and then people come here, and then you have some conversations up here on the dais. So, it's just a totally different form of decision-making, and I just want to add that to like, add some spice to possibly endorsing these different things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Peel?
This is actually a pretty easy question for me. I will passionately defend free speech and the ability to express an opinion. However, as a council member, I personally believe that I have a responsibility to be very judicious about how, what, and who I support and endorse, because in my mind, that is a responsibility to just be very careful as a leader in the community, how I present things.
Thank you. Ms. Pat Yandi?
I would say that I have a different opinion on the former than the latter. So, with regard to ballot initiatives, you didn't use the word endorsement. I do think that if you are somebody who's involved in politics or just involved in your city, oftentimes, your friends and neighbors count on you to be informed and to be able to explain issues to them in maybe a degree of depth that they are not able to understand things. And so, I am comfortable with council members being able, in their private life, to talk about what they think about ballot issues and support or not support. I don't think, I necessarily think it's appropriate for people on council to endorse other candidates. We are hired by the voters. We are not hired by other members of council as a committee, and so, I would say no to endorsing candidates, but yes to being able to state your opinion on ballot initiatives, but not at the dais.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, so, I actually have a very similar opinion. So, I think that, you know, being open about where you stand on various ballot initiatives is really important, especially because a lot of these ballot initiatives at the local level are put on there by council. So, I think it's very important for voters to know, you know, if, you know, you're on council, is this something that you would have supported and put up for a vote? So, I think it is very important to be open about where you stand on the local ballot initiatives. And I think that transparency is one issue that we could definitely improve on as a city, so that our whole political process and public policymaking process is more clear to the voters. As far as endorsements are concerned, I would, I would lean against that. So, I think it would be inappropriate for a city councilman to endorse another candidate. And the reason for that is because city council is fundamentally about service provision. And if you go into endorsements, and that'll just lead to more divisions and more partisanship. And I think it's really important for city council members to not be beholden to anyone except themselves and their district.
Thank you. Ms. Francis?
Yes, thank you for the question. I think for the first part, with the local ballot initiatives, you know, those that are referred to council, council takes a vote on those, which I think is a sign of whether or not you support it going to the voter. So, right there, you are signaling if you are in support or against it. So, I do think that there is some level of indication. Now, if it's endorsing other council members, I tend to agree with Councilmember Peel that it is a free speech, and it is up to the individual council member. And if it's a judicious process, and if they feel strongly that that is appropriate for them, then it would be up to them. And I, and I think everyone has a different level of how they approach elections and how they approach their support and how they support candidates. And everyone does that in different ways, and if that's how they publicly want to, then that should be up to an individual.
Thank you. Dr. Arn?
Thank you for the question. When I got elected in 20, whatever, 14, I, I just sat down and thought to myself about how I would do this, because it becomes kind of contentious, you know? So, I've done it since 14. If something's on the ballot, I don't take a position, except in very rare instances. But, but, you know, if it's before the people, that's your choice. I trust people. We have a robust ballot initiatives and citizen initiative and referral process. If it's before the voter, I trust the voter. I'm happy, and I always have had ballot initiative discussions, and people say, wow, I don't even really know how you're going to vote. I will tell them how I vote. I will not advocate for that. It is their choice, it's before the people. I trust the people. That's one. About personal endorsements, I agree with Emily Francis, you know? I will occasionally, but not always, and that is my prerogative. I don't, I have to be very aware that as a publicly elected...
She's so disciplined.
Those are the rules. Ms. Babett?
And I pretty much agree with everybody else. I, I feel like I want to know what my, my leaders are thinking and, and to be able to talk to them about it. So, for people to be able to talk about what's on their mind as far as anything coming up on the ballot, or even as far as anything related to, I'm sorry, I'm stumbling, but related to other members on the council, I feel like it's, it should be up to the person to decide.
Thank you. Mr. Hammack?
Yes, so, I probably agree with most of the folks who've talked already, but I would add that on the ballot measures, I definitely agree that the, a council member should be able to weigh in on a ballot initiative. It's because a lot of times, the council itself refers those ballot initiatives to the city, citizens for a vote. So, and if they haven't already, like, let's say, you plus two, that they chose not to do that, they already have an established opinion on most of these things. So, having to admit it publicly, I don't have an issue with. I just wouldn't want to see them at a council meeting try to lobby for a certain position. I think having it public is fine, as long as they don't use their position, the city council to lobby. And also, I'm against having personal endorsements, really. I think, I mean, you can support a candidate, you can do a lot of things for them, but without making it public, although most candidates know who's supporting who, so...
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Ms., yes, Pinataro. I'll get it straight. Oh, my order, I'm not very ordered. What improvements can you suggest to improve bus transportation ridership and service in Fort Collins and regionally?
Thank you, and I'm so glad I got this question first. So, I am proud to say that we did make all buses free coming out of COVID. We decided to keep that, and I think it will be that way in perpetuity. I have some ideas about the way we can harness the success of the MAX and try to simplify our bus routes so that they actually meet the MAX in more places than just at the ends. That way, if you miss your bus, it's not the end of the world, and you don't have to wait two hours for the next one. And hopefully, we can increase the ease and understanding, because if you look at it right now, it's worse than a spaghetti bowl. We do have a lot of inter-agency agreements with surrounding communities for service. I would love to see some bus rapid transit among the different communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Peel?
And sorry, can you repeat that one more time, please?
Definitely. What improvements can you suggest to improve transportation ridership and service in Fort Collins and regionally?
Okay, so, I'm going to take a minute and just focus on my district, because, one, I feel pretty strongly about this, and this is an area that really, we really need help. District Four, as you know, is pretty spread out, it's got a lot of natural areas. And so, our, one of, one of the complaints in our district is that they don't have access to transit. And so, we, we've been able to, you know, I was advocating for more transit, but I understand that if it's sparsely populated, it's harder to get, you know, bus routes out that way. So, microtransit has been a big help. So, in my district, at this point, microtransit is a, is a good way, or is a specific way for my district. And, sorry, got distracted. And I just want to keep advocating for, and I know it takes money, but I want to keep advocating for more bus routes, because I think, as Ms. Babett said, that we need to get people on the transportation, even though there's not a lot of people out there in my district, so, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Pat Yandi?
I'm also in support of expanding the bus rapid transit routes. I think the MAX is a really great option, and I think part of the reason that that is selected more than some of our other bus routes is that the time differential is not significantly different. And I think with some of the other routes, it is so cumbersome and takes so much longer that it's prohibitive to choose the bus over another option, like your, likely your car. So, I think those east-west routes are important. I'd also love to see more... I'd also love to see more regional cooperation to expand options to get to our surrounding communities, especially down I-25. I-25 is my least favorite street in Colorado, and it's very unsafe. And I think we just keep widening I-25 when a lot of folks would probably like to avoid that altogether. And then, you know, again, and I think Councilmember Peel mentioned this, but we need to continue expanding those options that allow people to get from their best route to their final destination in an eco-friendly and affordable way.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
This is definitely one where I have a different opinion. So ridership right now in 2022 is 38% of what it was in 2019, and there's no indication that it's recovering. About half of the riderships aren't even permanent residents. They're students. And the operating cost per ride, according to the Department of Transportation, is about $10. And that's not even including the large capital costs that go into it. We are currently $46 million behind in our spending, and we need a healthy dose of fiscal responsibility. I support busing. I think it's really important, especially in indigenous communities. But the fact is, many of these proposals that I think that the council and others are proposing risk creating a large financial boondoggle, which will distract us from other areas where we can have real good, like affordable housing, like the environment, and like neighborhood livability and air quality. So overall, I would be relatively skeptical of a lot of these initiatives. And I think that city council is really ripe for a change and needs someone who's willing to not spend money that we don't currently have.
Thank you. Ms. Francis?
Yeah, thank you for the question. You know, I think that council has adopted a really great master transit plan that really outlines where we need to go and how to get people there. I think that it is really important to keep our bus system fare-free because it does really encourage ridership and make it more accessible. It'd probably be a good idea for us to promote that it's fare-free because how many people in here knew that? I see two. And to the question of how do you encourage ridership? I think that's the thing, is we have a great plan. And now it's how do we really get the people to want to take public transit? I'm really passionate about working with PSD to get kids to start early because I think so much of it is habit. So how do we really work with PSD to get kids on city buses early so it becomes more of a natural part of their day-to-day lives and carry that into adulthood?
Thank you. Dr. Arndt?
Thanks. So I'm going to be brief so I can make one additional point. So reliability, predictability, availability, accessibility, and then well-funded. So it's like the rural electrification that we did collectively in America to make everything strong. And then now we're going to broadband. I think transportation's the same way. Yes, we have to subsidize it and fund it if that's the common good, right? So then we also have to look in policy-wise. So back to Emily's point, right now, there's a federal prohibition against school buses and local transportation collaborating. We have to bust through some ancient, old, anachronistic policy issues, right? So that's the nitty-gritty of actual policymaking for the greater good, to break through those barriers so that, like, all those stranded buses all summer, 12 weeks in the summer, sitting there. And other people need rides to places so that we can look at the policy implications of anachronistic policy to break through that.
Thank you. Ms. Babbitt?
Okay, so as someone who depends on public transit, well, more on my bicycle, reliability is huge. I was working this summer, evening classes at Front Range. And at the beginning of the summer, it was fine because I could ride my bike there and teach my class and come home. And it was still light and I felt safe. But the buses don't run until we need them to run. And they don't run on Sundays. And I love that we have free buses. But I know my students, who are mostly service workers, they depend on cars that are always breaking down to get to their jobs that don't even pay anything. And so we really need to find ways to have reliable transit. And like Shirley was saying, the microtransit to get to the bigger ones to have smaller sort of shuttle setups. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hamrick?
Yeah, could you repeat the question, please?
Oh, yes. What improvements can you suggest to improve bus transportation ridership and service in Fort Collins and regionally?
All right, thanks. I'll try to get through this as fast as I can. But I think one of the issues that we have is that we have this rapid development and growth throughout the city. What is there? 20,000, what is it? More development units going on in Fort Collins. We have Montava that's being built out in north. And we have all these developments going on, but they're not connected anyway to a walkable, livable city. They're, you know, how can we ever get bus transportation to these disparate, you know, places in Fort Collins? We just can't afford it. That's why I support what Alexander Adams said about budget constraints. You know, we need to go back and we need to make sure development is along the transit-oriented development and make sure that we have a modal approach to transit, to include bike lanes and everything. It's not just bus. It's the entire package. And we need to build a community that you can walk, but in focused development along College Corridor.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
So public transport, it needs to be publicly funded, I think. I think it's great that we're not charging for the buses right now. I think the easiest way to understand how we need to fix the system or where it needs help is to just take your phone out the next time you want to go somewhere and put it into Google Maps and then look at the car time, look at the bike time, look at the walk time, and look at the bus time. And you'll be shocked at how bad the bus time can be sometimes. And especially if you did it right now, it would say it'll get you home sometime tomorrow morning because I'm pretty sure the buses have already stopped. We're offering, I want to say $26 an hour to our drivers, and we still can't fill those spots. So we're going to need to do something, I mean, if we need to spend more money, to get the drivers suspended. If you can get people to and from their jobs without the need of a car, that makes living in Fort Collins more affordable. It achieves affordable housing in a kind of roundabout fashion, but I think it's really important. Last thing is, as someone else had mentioned, with, you know, getting kids on the bus, that's awesome. If you can make it a culture, if you can make it convenient and affordable, I take this thing called Landline to get to Denver Airport all the time because it's just awesome. It works. It's 30 bucks each way, so it works.
Thank you. For this round, we will begin with Mrs. Peel. As part of new zoning regulations, how much impact do you think that accessory dwellings will actually have?
You know, that is a really good question. And I think what's hard when you're up here making decisions, and what drives me crazy is trying to see unintended consequences or even the results of what you do. We've actually looked at this. Loveland had, you did say accessory dwelling units, right? Okay. Loveland loosened their accessory dwelling unit law. Was it last year? Or, no, it's been, no, it's been 10 years. I'm so sorry. And they, I think they've built like 29. So I happen to personally think that regardless of how much impact it is, we need to take away the regulation and allow people to be able to do that just as another source of housing.
Thank you. Ms. Pat Yandi?
I think the way that the question is worded makes it sound as if, if it doesn't make a big enough impact, that it's not worth pursuing. And I think when the city has been having discussions about housing, it's become abundantly clear that right now we are hyper-focused with our zoning on particular types of housing that are not meeting the needs of our community. Prior to the current kinds of zoning, you built the kinds of dwellings that you needed in your neighborhood and what fit there. And I think that accessory dwelling units are one viable kind of housing that we need to allow. And whether or not there are many ADUs because lots of people want to live in them or a few that allow folks to live in a situation that works for them, I think that we need to open the door to that kind of housing.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Thank you for that question. So I think that the push for density in ADUs will have a relatively small impact on housing prices and in fact, may actually make the problem worse. So the idea that if we just build more and have a larger supply and that's going to trickle down and reduce housing prices is based on the assumption that there's a single housing market. But there's actually multiple housing markets. And the market for luxury and median housing is totally different from the market from affordable housing. And unless there's a requirement that we build affordable housing, the fact is it's not going to get built. To use an analogy, if we build more Porsches, Toyotas aren't going to get cheaper. And this push for density, it hasn't worked in San Francisco. It hasn't worked in Portland. It hasn't worked in Seattle. It hasn't worked in Minneapolis. The fact is, these policies consistently don't work, but they lead to higher property taxes. They can lead to gentrification. And they generally lead to less affordability in areas where they are tried. So I think that the way that the current proposed code is set up with ADUs will not actually have a positive impact here and may have a negative one. And that there has to be a requirement for affordable housing for ADUs to work.
Thank you. Ms. Francis?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, indeed. What, as part of new zoning regulations, how much impact do you think accessory dwellings will have?
Thank you. I think it depends on how you define impact. If the impact is that an older adult can have an ADU and live there and rent out their main house and be able to age in place. If the impact is that a young professional can rent something that is cheaper in someone's backyard. If the impact is that two families can share space, then I think that's a positive impact for our community, and I would agree with that impact. So I think it depends on how we're looking at it. But the impact to me is that are we creating more housing solutions for our community? And if so, then I'm supportive of that impact.
Thank you. Dr. Arndt?
Thanks. I'm going to take off on the impact question because there's an impact on property rights when you restrict somebody's right to add on to their house so that their aging mother can live with them in an independent style. There's also an impact where we have a son who has autism, who could have lived with us during the pandemic in his own sort of free entryway with his own kitchen and live independently in a space that completely accommodates him, with the parking in our driveway. There's an impact to families when you restrict the choice of people who own private property and what they want to do with it. So that's one aspect. The reality is, these are very expensive if you do a non-attached one. So if you want to worry about parking and traffic, the reality is not a lot of people are going to do that. Are they going to refinish their basement and add a kitchen so that their mother can live there, so that their son with autism can also join them? Yes, that seems to me the right thing to do.
Thank you. Ms. Babbitt?
Okay, and again, it depends on the design of the ADU, how much impact it will have. But I think a lot of people don't think about the trees that get cut down for the ADUs and how that impacts our climate. I've been told that trees, our mature trees, can keep our temperatures down by like 20 degrees. And I live in an 800-square-foot cabin with my two adult children. And I call it my little cabin in the woods in the middle of the city because I want those trees. I want that shade in the summer. And if we had more trees saved, we'd have less heat going on. So I think that's a big consideration we need to have when we're talking about ADUs and our density.
Thank you. Mr. Hamrick?
So I kind of like the response of people that say that, well, it will have not much impact. It'd be great to have it in the neighborhood unless you're the person that lives in the house and then there are ADUs that come and get built on both sides of your house. And I think it probably will have a major impact. Will it have impact? Will it have any impact on affordable housing? No. Will it have any impact on traffic noise, disturbances in the neighborhood? Yes. And will it have impact on neighborhood deaccess? And so to have this kind of philosophical discussion about, you know, these things really won't impact the neighborhood very much or it won't be bothered, we won't be bothered by certain things. Yeah, you can say that unless you're the house that gets these things get built next to.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
I really like Jenny's thoughts on just kind of freedom, freedom to do what you need to do or want to do with the property that you've purchased, which is, it's tough to do. Yeah, I have the thought of the aging parents. I think if I asked my wife right now, hey, can my mom move into one of our spare bedrooms? That's going to be a big no. But the opportunity to potentially build something outside the home so we can take care of her, or maybe your mom, that's a much more appealing thing, and I like having that freedom. I don't think the impact on neighborhood life is going to be that severe at all, honestly. The two homes across the street from us have, between them, 13 wonderful children, tons of cars, mostly Subarus. And I'm happy to have them as neighbors. We've never had an issue with noise. We've never had an issue with parking. I can't imagine putting 13 children into, you know, two ADUs on either side of me. So I just can't see how it could get much more dense. So I'm all for the freedom. If it has any impact, let's do it.
Thank you. Ms. Pinataro?
So whereas I was happy to get the last one first, I'm really bummed to get this one last. So a lot has been said that I agree with here. You really, it's not a philosophical thing to think about your parents, your children, what can happen with your neighbors. And the truth is, it is extremely expensive. And even where you think it might be, where you could put one, such as my property, we live on a corner, we actually can't because there's utilities. And so I think when council member said last night they're going to be popping up like mushrooms, these are very expensive mushrooms and very rare. And again, to that question, then why do it anyway? Well, think in Loveland of those 29 people or families or whoever they are that don't need to drive into town, that can maybe walk in and see their mom in the kitchen and get a home-cooked meal. It's really important to think about the people that we're helping here. Thank you.
Thank you. With our next questions, we'll begin with Ms. Pat Yandi. Not going to do it yet. What do you see as the city's role with respect to the Northern Integrated Supply Project?
Wow, I get to be first on the NISP question. So, you know, the city has thus far taken a position of not supporting the project. And I think there are significant concerns about the potential environmental impacts of that project. I think, however, that the city needs to be thinking about if that project is in fact approved and is going to go through, how are we going to be at the table? And how are we going to be able to help make plans for making it the best situation that it could be, being what the project is? So I, you know, I am concerned about environmental impacts of a large-scale water project. And I think Fort Collins would be remiss to not be part of these discussions moving forward and making sure that Fort Collins' needs are being met if there is, if there are opportunities that need to be taken advantage of. And I know that part of District four is in the water district that is going to be utilizing this. So we need to be parts of those discussions.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
So I identify as a strong environmentalist, and I am actually concerned about the impact that the NISP project will have on recreation, what impact it will have on the environment, what an impact it will have on the species that use the river. You know, the fact is, the Pooter River is a collective resource, which we all, you know, should strive to maintain. And I am worried that the NISP project will have negative ramifications long-term. And I think that other water solutions, which reduce per capita use, other solutions which limit growth, which will also limit water use long-term, are exceedingly important alternatives that we should pursue rather than increasing the damming of the river. Now, look, the city so far has continued to have strong opposition to the project, something that I laud. And the one thing I can guarantee is if I'm elected in District six, that I will try to continue that policy and make sure that Fort Collins has a voice at the table no matter what happens, that our interests are represented, and that the district is represented.
Thank you. Ms. Francis?
Yeah, thank you for the question. You know, I think that Fort Collins has historically taken a against role in the NISP project. And as we see it progressing, it is really important that Fort Collins stay at the table to be able to advocate to what is important to Fort Collins, which is increasing as much flow as we can in the Pooter and protecting our natural areas. So as the process continues, how does Fort Collins still stay at the table? And how do we advocate for what we want? Which is the two most important things that we're trying to do here. And so as NISP has proceeded through this, we need to make sure that we are making Fort Collins heard and that we are working with our partners regionally to be able to make those two things happen.
Thank you. Dr. Arndt?
60 seconds isn't enough for me on water. So I was chair of the Water Committee at the Capitol, and now the governor's pointing me to the Water Quality Control Commission at the state. I'm very involved in these issues. The NISP project has received their 404 permit through the Army Corps of Engineers The NISP project has received their 404 permit through the Army Corps of Engineers and it's been signed off by the EPA. No project has failed since that. So two forks failed, but the EPA failed to sign off. So let's just say that this whole Northern Integrated Supply Project is a go. Fort Collins has been in opposition because we're not a participant, which is fine. We have pushed them on the environmental concerns for as long as we can go. It is finally federally permitted. We would be completely remiss if we did not ask for a seat at the table with them to negotiate. We're also planning our own dam at Halligan, and we could question that as well. And maybe what we do is collaborate so we get one dam instead of two.
Thank you. Ms. Babbitt?
Yes, I am very concerned about a lot of the NISP decisions. That's when I actually started speaking up publicly in town was when there was talk about the pipeline coming from up north down south rather than letting the water flow. And during that time, I talked to someone from NISP who said, well, we're going to buy and dry everything in Fort Collins. We won't have any more crops here. That'll all be in Nebraska. And I thought, do I believe my ears? So I am very concerned about how NISP is approaching things and definitely want to have a say. I love Jenny's idea of, I'd rather not have any dams, but at least having one rather than two. And especially after seeing the disaster in Libya where so many thousands of people died because the dams broke. I think we need to be very careful with how we deal with our water in NISP.
Thank you. Mr. Hamrick?
You know what they say? They say that whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting. And so I support the expansion of Halligan. I think it's going to provide water enough, sufficient. I think Fort Collins has said that it's to 2065. And so getting on the expansion of Halligan is the first thing we ought to do. I am opposed to NISP. It's going to be a disaster for the Pooter River. It's going to be a disaster ecologically and for the habitat that live along the Pooter River. We need to maintain inflows of water in the Pooter River, and that includes Thornton as well. So if they need to take any water, it should be after it flows through Fort Collins. However, I agree that if this happens, we need to have a seat at the table. That's the right thing to do for the constituents of Fort Collins. And one other issue is the Wall Street investors spying up water rights throughout Colorado. It's a big concern of mine.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
So the question's the city's role with NISP. I really like Jenny and Melanie's answers, like, this is happening. We have been against it. We can still be against it, but I think it's important to realize that we're not going to be in the way of it, and we're not going to prevent it. So the way to move forward is certainly to maintain a seat at the table, to make sure that everyone involved with the project understands where Fort Collins is coming from, what our concerns are, to ensure that, you know, any construction is according to our code. But to kind of be constructive, this is kind of coming from above. There's nothing we're going to do to make it go away. So have it have the minimal impact on our water and our city as possible should be what our goal is and what the city's role is.
Thank you. Ms. Pinataro?
Thank you. I was fortunate to be in the Water Literate Leaders class of Northern Colorado for 2019, where I learned a lot more about this. And admittedly, a lot has changed in the last year now that they're federal permitting and the EPA has approved. The city did do some great work with our 1040 win regulations to save our natural areas within city limits, and I'm really proud of the work we've done there. I agree, it's a very tricky situation because we do, we did actually change to opposing it. It was neutral up until four years ago, and then changed to opposing. And so we have to figure out through regionalism, talking to our neighbors, how we can keep that seat at the table, keep things civil, and keep things, keep, well, especially, sorry, every time she says the 15, it just throws you off a little bit. It's not your fault. But yes, I'm concerned, of course, for our natural areas, is we're all just stop right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Peel?
Yes, so the problem with, sometimes with Fort Collins having six different water districts is that when you're in our district, you find yourself advocating against what the rest of the city wants. But the reality is, we're in the Fort Collins Loveland Water District, and they need that storage at NISP. And so I think that our staff has done a great job of staying at the table and being a part of the conversation to, again, protect our natural areas, to make sure we have minimal impact on the Pooter River. And we do need to continue those conversations. We do need to continue that collaboration because we don't have the luxury of being on Fort Collins utilities. And I agree with the mayor that why are we building two dams when we could do one?
Thank you. For this round of questions, we'll begin with Mr. Adams. If there is a budget shortfall, what programs or services would you recommend to be cut or reduced?
Sure, so I guess we kind of answered that a little bit in another question, but I think transit is one that we should definitely look at in terms of ways that we can create a much more sustainable bus system. Because right now, as, you know, as I noted again, ridership is 38% of what it was, half the riderships are students, and the cost per ride is now double of what it was just a couple of years ago, and that's not even counting capital costs. With climate change, I think there are ways that we can actually achieve our climate goals in a very cost-effective way. As I noted in a previous answer as well, I think that moving towards a distributed energy system is good economics. It'll lead to more efficiency, and it'll allow us to actually adopt our various renewable goals and obviate a lot of the problems related to intermittent usage, which leads to lower energy prices and will therefore lead to more money long-term. And then finally, I think the most important tool at my disposal if I were to win this election on this topic is the ability to say no. The fact is, you can always take back a no, you can't take back a yes. And being able to say, this is a good idea, but how much does it cost? And saying, sorry, we can't prioritize right now due to budgetary constraints, I think is the number one way that we can prevent the funding gap from increasing.
Thank you. Ms. Francis?
Yeah, thank you for the question. You know, I think that the city, I don't think, I know that the city has very healthy reserves, and so a budget shortfall would be very unlikely. But in the chance that it did happen, we do have a very robust budgeting-for-outcomes process at the city, which is a public participatory process to decide the city's budget. And I think that would be the most logical place for that to go. Where do the residents and where do the people want to see us reduced in certain areas? It's not just up to City Council. We have a BFO, the Budgeting for Outcomes process, for a reason, so that it reflects the will of the people. And that's also reflective of our strategic plan and our city plan. So I think going to budgeting for outcomes would be the logical process to determine that. Now, if we, as a city, decide that we want to set lofty goals and we want to achieve more through our climate plans or housing plans or transit, that's when we go to the voters and ask if the voters want to fund those things.
Thank you. Dr. Arndt?
Thanks so much. So adding on to what Emily Francis said, I don't want to repeat it because I only have 60 seconds, but, you know, we've had downturns before, 2008 and so on. And you know what? We go back to the core services, the light, power, water, sewer, all the things that people expect the city can do but aren't necessarily the flashy things, right? So streets and public safety. We keep those. You could reduce down, or you could take those as the core services and then add on as you can. But we've done this in downturns before. I remember I walked around City Park and I called the city. It's like, why do the flowers look so good? We're in a budget downturn, right? We've had to prioritize on some of the nonessential services to maintain the core services.
Thank you. Ms. Babbitt?
Okay, that's a rough one. That's one where I definitely would want to have stakeholders meetings and listen to everybody's input for that. So like Emily, I feel like we'd need to put it out there for our people and our experts to discuss, what do we cut?
Thank you. Mr. Hamrick?
Yeah, so I want to be contentious here, but one of the first things I would do would be to say that, for the City Council to actually set the example in leadership on budget constraint and reduce spending. So let's say, let's not take an international trip to Japan, Portugal, or Paris this year, and let's not have the taxpayer foot the bill for our stay there. I think traveling internationally is just unacceptable in our environment. We have budget constraints. We're going back to the citizens for tax increases. This is totally irresponsible. I think some of the decisions that have been made recently regarding, let's say that even though you may or may not agree with it, rental registration program added $1 million to the budget. You know, why would you do that when you need to go back to taxpayers and ask for money? So I think we need to go back to the budget and look at everything, all the priorities and all the spend.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
I'll be the first to admit, I don't have any, like, targeted programs that I would cut. There's a gentleman who I watched speak right over here, Adam Eggleson, and he said every program should have a problem that it's trying to solve. And I really like that idea when it comes to deciding where the city should be spending its money. Sorry to quote Jenny again, but I really like the idea of if you are in trouble, you revert back to kind of the core services. How do you continue to provide the services that help the people who need the help the most? And, you know, those are the things that make your water run, that make your toilets flush and things like that. I like when I see, like, federal funding come through, like, for the Trilby intersection. I think where we may have gotten ourselves in trouble a little bit was with ARPA funding that we got during COVID. It funded a lot of programs temporarily that then kind of became things that we just renewed. And I think that might be why our budget looks a little bit lopsided. But that's not to say anything bad about any of those programs. Some of them were fantastic. But that might be how we start to rein things in if we have to.
Thank you. Ms. Pinataro?
Yeah, thank you for this question. We actually, when COVID hit, every department in the city was forced to come through and show a 15% decrease in how they could do that. And that was an amazing exercise for the city, and we have some very creative minds, and it also showed some great lean thinking and where things can be consolidated. And a lot of that led to great improvement. So whereas some people might freak out when they hear budget shortfall, I think that it can actually really help creative solutions come to the forefront. And we saw that coming out of COVID, and that's why things are, we came out better than before. It's amazing. And I also wanted to add, there is a program that the city has that teaches different departments how to find lean solutions, and they give prizes, and it's really made the city better for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Peel?
So just like at our household, before we can cut, we need to analyze our budget. And I've been advocating for this since I was elected. I think we need to look at our budget and analyze line by line and see if we still need some of the programs and services funded. And I, in my opinion, I think we keep adding on without requiring some really strong metrics on that money and how it's spent and if it's successful. And then, like I think the mayor said, our core services, we need to make sure our core services are funded well. You know, around the parks conversation, 51% of our parks have outlived their usefulness. And to me, that's a core service, and it needs to be funded. We need to make sure we're funding things like that. And in doing so, across the board, we need to plan for operations, maintenance, and replacement.
Thank you. Ms. Pat Yandi?
So as has been stated, there is a process for this, and it would not be my personal call. But I do believe it's really important that we continually be reviewing data to see if our money's being spent wisely and fine-tuning. But if we were in a shortfall, you know, I'm a school psychologist, I would go back to Maslow's hierarchy of needs and things that are closest to people and their foundational needs to be surviving safely and comfortably in our community. Those are the things that we would need to be prioritizing and that we would move up. And so, you know, closer to people means funding needs to remain intact.
Thank you. For this round of questions, we'll begin with Ms. Francis. How do you propose to deal with our ever-growing homeless problem in Fort Collins?
Well, 60 seconds is not enough, but I will try. So, you know, as we have seen, housing affordability become more and more of an issue, we have seen more people experiencing homelessness. We have more kids at PSD experiencing homelessness, more kids at CSU who are experiencing homelessness, and it has become a real issue. The thing is, is that we have a wide spectrum of people experiencing homelessness and their needs and what they need, and where are they? And so I think we need to look at many different solutions, and I think we really need to think outside of the box. So this could be safe parking lots, this could be pallet homes, this could be different kinds of group homes. So we really need to start looking at the spectrum of opportunities. I think one really great thing is that PSD and Thompson School District has worked together for a teen homeless shelter so that teens have a safe place to go, and that's something that we should always be supporting.
Thank you. Dr. Arndt?
Thank you. People need a place to feel at home. So we're working on occupancy ordinance, and someone said, why are you doing that? I said, fundamentally, let's leave all the detail aside. There's 15,000 bedrooms in our community, and people need a place to live. So let's start there. Then let's partner, right? Interfaith, police, nonprofits, CSU, PSD. I approached Colorado State University. I said, you know, what about your scholarship kids who can't go home for the holidays? So there's all sorts of homelessness out there, right? Do you have a community registry of people like me who would say, come into my home for two weeks over the holidays? Like, so that's not the solve. The point I'm trying to make is that we hit it from all angles, all the time, with everyone involved to provide a place for people to have a home.
Thank you. Ms. Babbitt?
I have personally saved about five people from homelessness in the past six years by opening up my home to them. I had hoped it would be shorter term, and often it was longer term than was comfortable. I've been sleeping in my living room in order to accommodate people who have just been stuck and they've needed an address to be able to even apply for jobs. So I think a big thing is if people can have an address and if, like Jenny was saying, CSU, but I think we have a lot of government buildings that, rather than building something, we can provide places for people to stay and shower and groom and try to help our homeless people find work so they don't have to be homeless anymore.
Thank you. Mr. Hamrick?
A couple of things on the homeless or housing insecurity, which is a big issue across a big spectrum of Fort Collins. I took, recently took a tour of the Murphy House and was talking to people who worked there. And one of the, I asked them what kind of AMI or percentage of AMI would most of the people need to have housing. And they said the biggest need for them was between 0 and 30% AMI. However, you never hear that at any of the council meetings or that discussion, and it's a big issue for them. And for those who are really in need, for those who really need it, that's where we need to focus our attention. Housing insecurity is a big issue. Also, I'd just like to say that we need to stop giving tax breaks to big, large national companies to move here. They move jobs and putting pressure on affordability in our community without putting it up to the table. I mean, we need to involve them and make sure that they can contribute to make sure we have affordable housing for their workforce.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
I think the unhoused is an extremely complex problem. And if you, I remember sitting through the city budgeting sessions and hearing about all the different things that the city does. You certainly need to, you can't have this discussion without talking about affordable housing, forcing people out of their homes, or preventing people who are unhoused from attaining housing. But you also have victims of domestic abuse or domestic violence that aren't able to be in their home anymore. You have people who are fighting mental health issues. You have people who are fighting substance abuse issues and addiction, as well as you have people that are just, you know, sometimes the police are the answer for these people who are either too violent or they're suffering from any number of these problems. So how do you tackle it? You tackle it with a multi-faceted approach. I like what I hear from the Fort Collins Police and their HOPE team. There's a new facility that's opening on December 22nd, which is my birthday, which is a great day, down on Shields that I think is going to house, I think, something like 200 new people for inpatient mental health, which is another great piece.
Thank you. Ms. Pinataro?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes.
And sorry, real quickly, if someone wants to turn that dial...
And sorry, real quickly, if someone wants to turn that dial right there, just twist it, the air will continue to circulate. Yep, just turn it as far as it'll go. Thanks. Happens every night. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
How would you propose to deal with our ever-growing homeless problem in Fort Collins?
Thank you. So we actually recently just got a report, and compared to our population growth, our homeless growth has not grown so many times at the same rate, which is some good news. That means that a lot of the programs we have in place are really working. I've been thrilled to hear the success story coming out of our, our permanent supportive housing units at Redtail Ponds and the one at Mason Place that opened up a few years ago. Many of the people that are in those, even though they do need permanent help, have gotten jobs. Many have moved out, gotten their own apartments. I would love to see at least one, if not two, more of those. Early in my council career, a bunch of us, I think Susan, you got to go, I'm not sure, Emily, we were in San Antonio, or we did one homeless shelter in San Antonio, and then a tiny home community in Austin that was amazing. With some of the innovation coming out of there, there were 3D printing homes on this place. It was amazing. And I think that we can find solutions like that, too.
Thank you. Mrs. Peel?
Yes, as a council member, I've been fortunate to ride along with the mental health team, the HOPE team, and walk the streets with Outreach Fort Collins to talk to the people on our streets who are experiencing homelessness. And I've also been working with our church community to try to initiate the Safe Parking Initiative. And like Julie said, the CSI report that came out was, with the data was very complimentary about the way we are handling this situation in Fort Collins. And so I think we, we need to continue what we're doing. There are some, I don't have enough time to tell you what all we could be doing, but there are some other things we could be doing. But one of the officers that I rode along with, he kept saying the word balance. He said, we've got to have a balance. We need to balance the needs of our homeless population with the needs of our community member, and members. And as we were riding around, he would say, we have really good balance here, but we need to work on the balance over here.
Thank you. Ms. Pat Yandi?
I think several people have mentioned that we do need to have a variety of options because everybody's situation's different. So we need different housing from highly subsidized to market rates, small to large, supported to completely independent. But I think no matter what, we need to recognize that being unhoused requires a housing-first perspective, where if you do not have a stable home, you're not going to be able to work on any of the issues that maybe landed you in an unhoused situation or are keeping you there. So I, I think, not to reiterate what other people are saying, but in addition to expanding housing options, we need to be working with the county to strengthen our social support programs that help folks to get into meaningful jobs, keep those meaningful jobs, get childcare they can afford, mental and physical health, just making sure that we are taking care of people's needs to make sure that homelessness is a less likely outcome in the first place.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, so I'm actually very proud that on my website, I have the most comprehensive plan on the unhoused and homelessness problem compared to basically anyone on the stage. And I think there are various concrete policy solutions that we should pursue that I've developed from both reading the literature and as well as talking to activists, homeowners, and the unhoused themselves. So the first is that we should adopt a homelessness outreach team, a permanent one, like what Houston did. That led to a precipitous decline in homelessness and allowed for there to be a unified singular response to the homelessness problem, problem across departments and between both private and public groups. Second, I think we need to think of innovative and non-punitive ways to enforce our rules, because the fact is enforcement's important, but it doesn't work if it's punitive. We need to ensure that we track people on a path to get the help they need. And finally, we need to research, I think, family reunification. Overall, if the unhoused and homelessness is your issue, then I am your candidate.
Thank you. For our next round of questions, we'll begin with Dr. Arnt. What ideas do you have to improve the current labor shortage?
The labor shortage, so people, employers seeking employees. So I think that's, I, I think that we would go to workforce development and our strong partnerships with Front Range Community College, we meet with regularly, and their collaboration with Colorado State University, and they meet with business leaders to understand what the needs are in our community. So they have a robust program out there for welding. You know, when they see a need in the community, Front Range Community College is absolutely per, looking perfectly positioned to meet the needs of the community in developing the leaders we need for tomorrow in terms of the jobs that they're seeking. And that's also a strong partnership with Pooter School District, who's also joined in that effort. And I think that we, we're absolutely committed to doing that. Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Babbitt?
Yeah, so the program I work with, it's called The Learning Source at Front Range Community College. We, we teach English to people to help them get better jobs, and we also work with GED students to try to help them get better jobs. But a lot of the issue is, are people willing to work in the jobs that we need them in? So it's kind of a, you can bring the horse to water, but how do you make it drink situation? So I, I do my best to help people be ready for the, the labor needs, but I, I haven't figured out how to say, okay, go do it. I think people are feeling they need something that we're missing, and that's why we have our labor shortages.
Thank you. Mr. Hammack?
Well, it's a complex issue, and it's tough, I think, in, in today's environment, post-COVID, where a lot of things have changed dynamically within the labor market. I think it comes down to people want and need a living wage. If they're going to work in a position or a career or job, they're looking for what's the potential for them being able to also live in a community that they work and afford housing, either rent or purchasing. But I, I think it comes down to wages. And I was kind of surprised that the City of Fort Collins, that the minimum wage ordinance did not pass. I would have been for it. I think you can't talk at the one end about giving all kinds of money to affordable housing needs when you don't talk about paying people a livable wage so they can afford that housing. Either way, the taxpayer money is, and, and other money is being spent.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
There's not a labor shortage. There's just not. There, there's a pay shortage. We, we went through COVID. Our, everyone's lives were drastically altered, and, and people took a long, hard look at what they're doing, what they're earning for it. We then sat through, what, a year and a half, two years of 8% inflation month over month? Yeah, there's, there's, I'm looking from my camera. There's not a labor shortage. There's a wage shortage. The, the amount of money paid to people for doing work has not increased at the rate of the cost of living, the cost to eat, the cost to heat your home, the cost to put gas in your car. What, what, how do we, how do we improve that? We pay people better. We also need to make sure that people at all ends of the income spectrum have places they can afford to live where they're expected to work, so we don't become the next, you know, Breckenridge where no one can afford to live there to do the jobs at the rates that they're paying. So better, better pay if there is no labor shortage.
Thank you. Ms. Pinotero?
Thank you. I think all of us candidates here in District 2 agree on this one. I did vote for that minimum wage. We got as close as we, I heard that the city council has ever gotten. I agree. You know, if you go to a mountain town, you will see what could happen here. And it's, it does go back to housing prices as well. I mean, it's not to the point that just restaurant workers and other service workers can't afford to live here. It's to the point that working professionals. I know a vet tech who is living illegally with four other people just so she can live in town and be able to bike to her job. And so we have a lot of issues that are all intertwined here. And they, that is important to make sure that we look at it from all those different angles. And I look forward to continuing to work on that.
Thank you. Mrs. Peel?
Yes, I agree with the mayor about the workforce development. And then I'm, I'm always an advocate to support our small businesses so they're healthy, so they're in turn can provide benefits and healthy wages. But what I'm really passionate about is workforce housing. I grew up in a small town where the school district provided workforce housing for their teachers. Now, that may be because they had to do that to get them to come live in the middle of nowhere. But I also was able to visit a business here in town that their corporate headquarters built workforce apart, housing apartments attached to their corporate headquarters. And they also, they didn't charge a deposit, but they took like $25 out of each check. And when that person moved on, if there was no damage to the apartment, they gave them that money so they had a, a deposit for their next house. So I think innovative solutions like that would be very helpful to, to help our workers.
Thank you. Ms. Pat Yandi?
The minimum wage vote is one of the, the biggest differences in voting that I, that was something that I would have voted differently on, and I was disappointed to see that the minimum wage increase in Fort Collins did not go through. I think that there are, that all jobs in this city are important and help this city run, and we've got specific sectors in which people are not being compensated in a way that is fair for the work they're doing or that is supporting them remaining in our community. And it's not just the minimum wage. I, you know, we've talked a lot about things like teacher pay, healthcare pay. Those are all problematic. And what I can tell you is that our city's been very supportive of raising wages for our teachers. We're still working on that. But I want to see those wages, those wage increases generalize across fields, because everybody in this city and the jobs they're doing are important. I would also like to see additional options for folks to get job training that do not involve incurring college debt, especially in the skilled trades. And I'd love to see expansion of things like apprenticeships.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
So there's an old adage, if you tax something, you get less of it. And so, I mean, to talk about ballot initiatives earlier, I'm personally against both of the proposed tax increases. I think that that's going to actually contribute to the problem. Second, we've been talking a lot about minimum wages. I actually do think there is a compromise here, increasing minimum wages. There actually is some research suggests that it may reduce employment. But at the same time, I do think it would be important to attach it to inflation or the cost of living so that it doesn't continue to decline. And finally, and this is kind of where I think the economics background comes into play here, labor shortages actually increase wages and reduce income inequality and give worker better bargaining power. The fact is, a labor surplus is big businesses' biggest ally, and labor shortages actually are the workers' greatest benefit. So the fact is, we'd have to tread lightly here, because the fact is, I don't want to line the pockets of millionaires.
Thank you. Ms. Francis?
Yeah, thank you for the question. You know, I, I do agree with Sean that during COVID, I think that there is a real shuffle, shuffle and reexamination of what people were doing with their lives, and a real examination of what their careers were and what their jobs were and how that was impacting their quality of life. And I do think that we, as a society, do not respect certain professions such as servers, janitors, even teachers. And, and I think that has really contributed to a shift in what people are doing for work. And, and so I think that how do we, as a society, and how do we, as Fort Collins, really value those? As someone who worked in the restaurant industry for 12 years, I can tell you it's really hard work, and everyone should be really nice to their servers. But I also think that as college has becoming more and more attainable for folks, because it is so unaffordable, that we do really need to work at, look at non-college options. And I think we are doing that. We're working really well with PSD on, on PSD talking about non-college alternatives, and then working with FRCC to make that happen.
Thank you. We've come to the point of closing comments. And for that, we will begin with Ms. Babbitt.
Gosh, I'm, I'm not ready to close. I just want to say thank you again for having us all up here and giving us the opportunity to discuss these issues, to listen to each other. And I'm a proponent of brainstorming, so listening to all of us hopefully will help move forward in the future of making good decisions for the future of our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hammack?
Well, let's say thank you for the league for hosting this event and reminding me that a minute really isn't that long to talk. So as I drone on, I'd just like to say that, you know, the selection's about the vision that you want to have for the City of Fort Collins. Do you want it to continue to have rapid development and growth, density forced in the neighborhoods, more congestion, more unfunded mandates as far as infrastructure, more traffic, more noise? You know, look over the past four years, have things gotten better for worse, and you can make your own mind up about those. But I would appreciate your support and consideration, and please go to my website, ericforcouncil.com. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
Definitely wanted to thank not only the league for hosting this, but also anyone who's, who's watching in person or, or online, just for being an active participant in the process. That's kind of the, the coolest thing that anyone can do. It also dawned on me, as I was sitting up here, that I've been using your 411 website for years. So I think it's, it's pretty awesome. And now some of my ideas are going to be on it for people to evaluate. Excited about the election, excited that, that people are passionate enough to, to care. If anyone wants to chat, I think with any of us, we're always accessible. All of our ideas are on all of our websites. And just thank you again for coming.
Thank you. Ms. Pinotero?
Yeah, thank you. And thanks again to the league as well. Also want to thank the voters, because some things that are coming up that are super important. One, obviously, the election moved to November, and then we'll have ranked choice voting in 2025, which is so exciting. Because the election moved to November, I had a little extra time to decide if I was going to run or not. And when I asked my 10-year-old son, because he, he was the most important decision-maker in this one, do you think I should run again? And he kind of looked at me, we were walking to school, and he said, well, you might be home more if you didn't run, but then you wouldn't be helping people. And man, that like hit me hard. And it's like, he gets it. Like, it has been such a pleasure, and I cannot wait to help this community for another four years. As a working mom, it's just so important to me to continue working for the families that live here and those that are struggling to like have the opportunities that I had. And so please vote for me in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Peel?
Yes, thanks to the League of Women Voters for putting this on, and thank you for all, all of you who came out to participate in our public process. I've said before, I've been a beneficiary of this beautiful city, and I would like to continue giving back. I love solving problems, so I'd like to continue working on the, all the problems that we've talked about here tonight. But specifically, there are many things in District 4 that I would still like to give attention to, like better cell service, making sure we had, we have wildfire protection in our natural areas, the undergrounding of the electric lines that has not been completed, upgrading roads that have not been brought up to city standards, and my favorite project, the South College project. So more information about me can be found at voteshirleypeel.com or reelectshirleypeel.com. And I love this job, and I hope to be able to continue serving the City of Fort Collins.
Thank you. Ms. Pat Yandi?
I'll echo people thanking the league for hosting and people for turning out. And for those of you who aren't aware, I served as an interim city council member back in 2021. And after the April election, I filed almost immediately to run again because I loved my time here on council, and I felt like I had a lot more work to do. I think my perspective as a working mom, as a school psychologist who takes care of the mental health of our District 4 youth, and my drive and my focus and my values are a good fit for this body. And I really feel like this room is where the decisions are going to be made that are going to take care of our community for the long term. This makes an impact, and I would like to help be part of that impact. So you can learn more about me at my website, melanieforfoco.com. But I, I just am honored to even be here, and I appreciate everybody's time tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
I would also like to thank you all for hosting and coming out tonight. So we've talked about a lot of issues, overdevelopment, water, the environment, fiscal responsibility, and homelessness. And the question that everyone needs to ask themselves is, do you want change, or do you want more of the same? I am the change candidate. I am the change candidate. I proposed multiple policies up here tonight that are different and would bring us on a different direction. On my website, I'm very proud to have multiple very lengthy policy discussions that you can also visit, adams4fc.com. So fundamentally, if you would like to see change in November, regardless of who you vote for, vote and if you want change, I'm your candidate.
Thank you. Ms. Francis.
Yeah, thank you to the league for hosting tonight and thank you everyone for coming and submitting some really hard and thoughtful questions tonight. I also just want to thank all the candidates for running. These are people who really care about your community and running for office is no easy task. And so I've had the honor of serving District 6 for the past four years and I'm very privileged to ask for another four years. And I think that we've really made great progress on our housing, transportation, and climate and we can continue to do that. So I just humbly ask for your vote in November and thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Arnt.
Oh, thanks. I just, also, I can't, I have to thank the league again and then I want to thank all the candidates for running. It's really hard to put your name on a ballot, on a ER sign, come up here, be televised for two hours. It's stressful. I especially want to thank Patricia Babbitt. I don't like running unopposed. It's really great for the voters to have a choice and here's why. Democracy is about participation of your community to weigh in on, to get the community that you want. And if you don't have a choice, it's not healthy. So thank you Patricia for standing up. It's not easy, I know that. I'm going to quote my favorite guy, Barney Frank, and say, government is simply the word we use for the things we choose to do together. And fundamentally, I trust people and I trust that you're going to make the decisions that you want on all the ballot initiatives and all the candidates to get the community that you want. And I want to thank you for that participation.
Thank you. We strongly urge everyone to vote. The results of this election will greatly influence the future of our city. Ballots will be mailed on October 16th and will be due on November 7th. To be safe, ballots should be mailed by October 31st. We want to thank Zach Haig for our technical support tonight. We thank you for your interest and your participation. And now please join with me in thanking the candidates for their willingness to serve.